Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Town of Wolfboro zoning board of adjustment. My name is Fred Todeschi. I act as chairman of this distinguished group. To my immediate right is Susan Razor. She's our clerk. To her right is Mike Cotter. He's our vice chairman. And to his right is Suzanne Ryan. She's an alternate member of the board. To my immediate left is Sarah Silk. She's a member. To her left is Hank Whye. He's a member. His left is Dave Senical. He's an alternate. And to the far left is Tim Cronin. He's also an alternate. Will you read the first notice for us? Thank you.
The first matter before the ZBA this evening is case number thirteen-Victor-17 concerning tax map number 188-41. The applicant is Robert Karstedt. This is a public hearing for a variance under section 175-80 of the Wolfboro Planning and Zoning Ordinance to allow for the construction of a six-by-12-foot front deck with railings to replace damaged and unsafe deck of six by five feet without railings and too narrow to access the front door safely. This property is located at 22 Lakeview Drive. A site visit was held at approximately 4:00 PM prior to this meeting, and all members of the ZBA were present except for Mike Cotter and Hank Whye. Notice of this meeting was provided to the relevant town offices and to the Karstedts, Thomas Bryant Revocable Trust and Mary Beth Bryant Revocable Trust, Pat Waterman Revocable Trust, Smith, Carol C. Hunt Trust.
Mr. Chairman, before we go further, I should announce that about 26 years ago, I had a business relationship with the applicant's grandfather. And about 10 years ago, I had a business relationship with the applicant's mother. I have no business relationships with anybody currently. I have been retired for about nine years. I don't think I need to recuse myself, but I thought I would be clear with that. Does anyone disagree? Okay, thank you. Karstedt, you're up.
Hello?
In presenting your case, sorry about that. Sometimes the mics are livier than others. In presenting your case, would you please go through the elements that you feel as you put into your filing? You can read them if you wish. You can summarize them.
Sure. Well, the porch that is going to be replaced, it was falling apart, and it was mounted too close to the sill, so it was forcing water under the sill and rotting out the house. And the new porch will be safer, and that will be new and not falling apart. And it'll be slightly lower, so it'll have better, you know, not rotting the house. And it will have railings and slightly wider, so you can open the door towards you and not step off the porch.
In your variance request, you listed your reasons for why. I just gave it to you. Would you go through those for us, please, for the record? Thank you.
Sure.
Start with number one.
All right. Should I just read it? The use as a single-family dwelling remains the same. The use of any abutting land is not compromised by the encroachment. The replacement addition of the new deck will be of correct code and increased safety measures for the small children living in the home. And number two, the spirit of the ordinance is observed because this remains a single-family home in the residential classification. The current home has no adverse effect on abutting usage, and the spirit of the ordinance is observed by making the entry deck safer for the family by granting the variance. Number three, there are no adverse effects to other landowners or abutters in the neighborhood. There is no harm to use value or to use value or welfare and safety is improved by granting the variance. The new deck with railings will match the home style and be in proportion to the home. It will improve curb appeal, safe entry, and overall aesthetics, and may increase value in the surrounding area. The current deck is already in the encroachment area and is currently unsafe and not code. The variance will not injure public or private rights of others. The existing deck does not fit, not fit the 30-foot setback, and enforcing it would not allow for an expanded safe front entry for the current family raising small children. The family plans to make their home safe for their children by bringing the entry deck up to code and by giving safe birth and going in and out with packages, toys, strollers, et cetera. All residential uses.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
I just wanted to comment that since the porch had been removed, that it's greatly appreciated that you took these photos ahead of time. Thank you.
Other questions? Comments? So in sum, what you plan to do is expand a five, what was it, five-by-six, five-foot deep, six-foot wide?
It just gets a little wider, two feet wider on each side is all.
And then make it one foot wider going in, because it'll be six foot instead of five?
Right, but it might be only one stair instead of two now, if that matters. So.
So that we would, you would want permission to do two in case the grant, the grading is not appropriate?
I'll ask for permission. Yes, please.
Is the total, total front encroachment going to change?
I don't believe so.
So it's going to remain eight feet front encroachment, whether it's two steps or one step?
I'm not sure.
Or you have to kind of be.
Let me see if I can.
How wide do you expect the steps to be? Is it a two-by-eight that you're using?
Whatever is a normal code, I'm not building it, so I don't.
You're asking for an eight-foot front encroachment?
No.
No?
No.
According to our planner's review, an eight-foot.
I think it's a six foot. Is it eight foot?
Including steps.
Including steps?
I assigned a measurement to the application, but the application said six feet. I'm drawing the encroachment of the steps.
Yeah.
In my opinion, it's a one feet whatever.
We need to know exactly how big of an encroachment you're anticipating, either a six-foot encroachment without any steps or eight feet as per the diagram you've given us.
Let's ask for eight feet, please.
Okay, thank you.
Is the porch that is in these photographs with the steps, is that eight feet? I mean, is this part six feet and then this added, an additional two feet?
I believe that's six by five, not including the stairs.
Not including the steps?
Right.
So essentially, the encroachment towards the street will be very similar to what it was previously. It's just that the porch will be wider.
Correct.
Thank you.
It's wider about two and a half feet on either side of the steps.
Other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak in favor?
Also, yeah, I'll ask you.
Anyone else wish to speak in favor of the applicant? Anyone wish to speak against the applicant? Okay, hearing, seeing nothing. I close the public hearing. Let's discuss the application.
Mr. Chairman, I think it's a pretty straightforward application. I'd be perfectly happy to not go through each of the five points if the board felt they could do it that way and just move on quickly. Otherwise, I'd be happy to go through each of the points if the board so desires.
I think we should go through the criteria as we traditionally do, whether it's an abbreviated application or not.
We also have to create a record, since our recording secretary is not here.
Okay. And I'll begin, if I may, looking at criteria numbers one and two, combining two as we have been so advised by the court. I ask myself, does approve, would approval of this application violate the basic goals of 175-80's front setback requirements? And would approval endanger public health, safety, or welfare? And I have to answer in the negative in both cases.
That doesn't alter the neighborhood in any way.
Talk into the mic. Talk into the mic. Suzanne said that she wanted to add that it doesn't alter the neighborhood in any way.
Are you having trouble, Hank?
You gotta talk into the mic.
I'm sorry. Let me get this.
Any other comments on the first? Mike, you're on a roll.
I'm on a roll. All right, number three. Substantial justice done on balance. Obviously, substantial justice is done. The town gains very little by a strict enforcement of this ordinance. The applicant loses if the ordinance is strictly enforced. If the ordinance is relaxed by a variance, the applicant gains. The town loses very little, so I would find in favor of number three.
Did you hear that, Hank?
Yes.
Yes. Relative to number three, I think looking at this picture and then confirming that actually what he will be building will not get closer to the street, it will just be wider. I think that pretty much it's a substantial justice, because it's pretty much a replacement. And the front setback is to keep houses away from the road, and his new porch will not actually be closer to the road. It does not appear that way.
Is the five foot from the house or?
No, it's left to right.
Five foot width, six foot depth, existing. Okay. Other comments?
I don't think that's described quite correctly. It's already, the existing porch is already too far forward with the steps. So granted, they're making it wider on either side, but those two portions that are wider on either side are what it's here to get the variance for. So it does encroach, the new portion still encroach, and that's why you see it for the variance.
But then they are no closer to the street than the existing front steps, front deck.
Yeah, I was just correcting.
No, I got you. Other comments?
Continuing on, criteria number four, or values of surrounding properties diminished. In my personal opinion, I would think not. I've seen no evidence or testimony tonight to the contrary, so I would find in favor of number four.
Other comments? Number five?
Leave me with the hard one. Special conditions. As currently built, the porch existing is both unsafe and cannot be replaced, given the current setbacks, as it is already in violation. So I find there special conditions. Five A, I think we've already found in number one. It is in, it is, does not, is not contrary to the public interest, nor does it violate the spirit of the ordinance. And is this use reasonable? Use is already in place, and approval simply improves the safety of the current use.
Matt, when this house was built, this was not a violation of the setback.
Correct. It's not even clear if the porch was on the house when it was built, but I don't think there was violation.
There would have had to have been some way of getting up into the, so we can presume there was something there. Okay. Sarah?
May I ask Matt a question? So really, it's a pre-existing non-conforming more than a violation, the pre-existing deck?
That's correct. And in fact, the owner could have rebuilt in kind within the existing footprint, if you will, of that porch, but the expansion is the only thing that triggers, as Suzanne was saying, the expansion is the only thing that triggers the need for variance. But yes, it is an existing non-conforming grandfathered structure, essentially.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we grant the variance under section 175-80 of the Wolfboro Planning and Zoning Ordinance to allow for construction of a six-by-12 front deck with railings to replace the damaged and unsafe deck of six feet by five feet without railings and too narrow to access the front door. The variance applies to the residents at 22 Lakeview, and I recommend that we grant the variance with the five conditions contained within the Director of Planning Development's memo dated 31 October 17.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
I can't, I can't make the motion, but I would say that it should be clarified that the setback encroachment is of six feet, but eight feet, including the steps. It should be clarified.
Kenny?
Just alter the motion that you made to include.
Just amend the motion.
Yeah, to include an eight-foot front encroachment.
So I want to include in my motion an eight-foot encroachment of the.
Include the steps.
To include the steps.
And I'll resecond that.
Second, as amended, okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The variance has been granted. You're welcome to stay if you wish, but we won't be offended if you leave.
The next matter before the ZBA concerns case number 14-Cierra-Echo-17. It concerns tax map number 268-40. The applicant is Robin. The applicants are Robin and Richard Wyman. This is a public hearing for a special exception from section 175-43, section A1 of the Wolfboro Planning and Zoning Ordinance to allow for the construction of a one-room, pardon me, of one room with a small entrance deck to an existing one-room camp originally built in the 1940s. The property is located at 76 Middleton Road. A site visit was held at approximately 4:40 today prior to this meeting, and all of the ZBA was in attendance with the exception of Mike Cotter. Copies of notice were provided to the appropriate town offices and to the Wyman's, Oxford Way Nominee Trust, Joanne Parisi Irrevocable Trust, Wolfboro Congregation of Jehovah's Witnesses, McGuire, Chase, and Ortiz.
Who wishes to speak on behalf of the applicant? Would you please identify yourself for the record?
I'm Robin Wyman.
Rich Wyman, 76 Middleton.
Thank you.
Can I just read this right off the paper?
Yeah, for the record.
All eight points.
Okay. A special exemption is requested as provided in article section, sorry, you must, it's not filled in here, of the zoning ordinance to permit construction of a one-room addition onto an existing one-room camp. Our camps were built in the 1940s, pre-zoning. There is adequate level usable space for the small footprint of this addition. There are no environmental constraints. This addition will not alter the existing use of the property, nor will it cause additional vehicles on the property. There will be no additional hazards, no change in parking, no change in entrance exit from the property. Our camps are seasonal, May to October. We are on town of Wolfboro Water and Electric. We have adequate private sewer. There will be no change in any of the above listed items, parking, traffic circulation, open space, fencing, screening, landscaping, signage, commercial vehicles, lighting.
Number six, immediate neighborhood integrity.
Number six. The Gray Shingles property has been run as a business since the 1940s. Prior to this, Camp Ihawi was run on this property in the late 1920s to mid 1930s. We have invested much in this property and business in the last two years, revitalizing it, and don't believe we are impacting the neighborhood integrity in a negative way. The small camp addition will not cause a decline in property.
We have to, since we're recording this, we need to read the items. So I'll read the item, and then you can respond. Impact on property values?
The small camp addition will not cause a decline in property values. We believe that saving this property from its own decline has been beneficial to not only us, but the neighborhood and the town of Wolfboro. Everyone benefits. All of our neighbors have been very supportive of our efforts.
Item number eight, the proposed use of structure is consistent with the spirit of the ordinance and the intent of the master plan.
We, as residents of Wolfboro and owners of Gray Shingles Camps LLC, have contributed much to the town by providing high-quality lodging. We are hosting guests from around the world. We contribute to the economy of Wolfboro and the state of New Hampshire by sending our guests patronize other local businesses. If we are able to improve our property now and in the future, everyone benefits.
Thank you. Questions for the applicants?
Question for the planner? If that's permitted?
Yes.
Okay. Matt, just a question, and I need some guidance here. Can a expansion of a non, can there be more than one expansion of the same non-conforming use?
Yes. In my opinion, yes, there can.
Even though the ordinance is not clear?
Yeah.
It speaks only of a single expansion. Doesn't, doesn't, doesn't make that word plural. The word is singular. An expansion up to 25%.
In my opinion, it could be.
So in the applicant's letter to you, I believe it was, yeah, of November the first, in which the applicant says the addition could potentially be added and may allow for another addition of this type in the future, that would be allowable, in your opinion?
I am not going to use that question because I think we need to discuss that potential of addition. But I believe the ordinance does provide for multiple uses up to 25%, which I agree has complications, but I think it's something we certainly need to grapple with once and afterwards. But I don't think.
As they grow, they grow. Maybe it's based on the original.
May I ask Matt a question? Yes. Regardless of whether they could have a second one, that's really moot at this point, because this is the first request for an expansion. And the scenario that Mike is referring to, that doesn't need to be addressed unless they came back again, correct?
That's correct. I think it's a good question for the board to contemplate for being such an ordinance, the ordinance for all the abidus, which could be problematic. But I think Mike's point is a good one.
The reason I raised the point, Sarah, was simply to alert the applicant that this is a matter that has not been settled, and so that they should not, in the backs of their minds, assume that there can be automatically a second application for expansion of the same non-conforming use, because for one thing, we want, we'll have a brand-new basis to start the expansion from. And I agree, it's not germane to this particular case. That's why I asked the question of the planner and not the applicant. Of another, sorry, Suzanne, you go.
No, no, you finish what you're saying, and I'd like to add to that.
I just had another, another question on the applicability of 175-43 to this application. The non-conforming use occupies all of the parcel, correct? The entire parcel is a non-conforming use?
Probably except our residents. Excuse me for interrupting, but.
It's a commercial use?
Commercial.
Yeah, so it's a non-conforming use in this area?
Yes.
Consequently, non-conforming use doesn't qualify for, for relief under 175-43-2, because the non-conforming use doesn't occupy a portion of the parcel. It occupies the parcel. Or am I misreading that?
Well, I might have answered your first question differently, actually. Yeah, I can use my.
I would argue this use does not occupy the entirety of the parcel. It's a mix of residential use and commercial use. So for that very reason, I think 175-43-2 does in fact apply. There is a single-family residential use and a commercial use in the property. They each occupy a portion of the parcel. So I don't think that the entire parcel is occupied by a commercial use. That's why.
This is a mixed use of commercial and residential on the same parcel?
It is.
Okay.
Yes.
I also, relevant, Matt, relevant to 175-43. As I read it, the building inspector has quote cited the number-one portion of Article A expansion.
That's an error in the building inspector's.
It should be number two.
That's correct.
And because it is, the number-one is for the maintenance and rebuilding of, number-two is for a portion of any building may be expanded. So it's not, that's incorrect, and somewhere needs to be corrected in our record. It's a special exception for 175-43-A2.
Yep. And I'll, I can revisit the code enforcement officer's letter just to make sure that that's reflected accurately on that piece of information, because I think that's an important point.
And then I had some other questions. Can we have, we've got the square footage, but can we have the size of the deck and the size of the room expansion broken out? And that follow-up question to room expansion, is that an expansion for the sleeping quarters? And how many will be allowed to sleep in that unit?
It is a bedroom addition. The camp currently sleeps two people, and this will allow for it to sleep four people.
And, and do you have the size of the room and the size of the deck broken out?
The addition is 169 square feet. The deck is 43 square feet.
Now, do you have it in feet, like six by eight and?
The addition is 12 and a half by 13 and a half feet. The deck is 12 and a half feet by. Three and a half feet.
What'd she say?
Three and a half.
12 and a half by three and a half.
And just to add my two cents, I, I have to think that this is not, and you're going to have to get a reading on this from the attorney, because this is going to come back for sure, eventually, in time. And I would read it that 25%. I would read it as a, in total of the parcel, not to exceed 25%. Not building by building by building by building. But again, I would like for you, if you could, let us know what you get back for reply. It won't affect tonight, although it could in the backs of our minds, but let us know, because it will come before us again in another manner anyway.
It's a very good question, and it's one that I pondered when I was speaking to the spokesperson's manager. And what I use, as my method is, I use the sum. And what I use, using my methods, I use the subtle square footage of the commercial buildings. Was that a perfect methodology? Perhaps it's not. But no, it's something that needs to be stored more detailed as well because that can be more interesting to make, specifically than that.
And, and this will be going for a site plan review because it's commercial, right?
I would assume that, yes, yes, expansion.
You assume or the answer is yes?
Answer is yes.
Can I just clarify something? We took the square footage of the five cabins. We did not include the rec hall. We will not be expanding the rec hall, but we may be expanding our residence.
Yeah, the residence...
And I wouldn't want the residents to be affected by anything we do with the business.
The residents aren't affected by an expansion.
Okay.
That's why I, the question is, is it really important, because we have a single-family residential use, we would separate them into two categories, that's accurate. Yeah, regular, it's a process.
Excuse me. The, the measurements that you provided on the additions, that'll, it'll have the same configuration, I mean, the fa, it'll maintain the same distances, the front and the back of that cabin will be the same and consistent with all the other ones as well. So it's really just pushing it a little bit closer to one of the other existing camps.
Correct. Between number-two and number-one.
There's plenty of space between the camps because people used to drive back there and park their cars in between the camps years ago. So it's just space. It's, you know, we will not be too close.
Thank you.
Will there be a separate entrance to the, from the outside to the addition or will it only be from internal?
Yeah.
So you'd be able to go out onto the deck?
Do you want to see the plans? I didn't know if you had the plans or not.
We just get sketches.
But we don't have that.
The new structure.
That's the front. This will be the front of the bedroom addition.
Oh, of the bedroom, this part?
Yeah.
Anyone else want to see the plan?
Yes.
Could we see this as well?
Should I just...
Pass it down, yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
Susan's question raised a question in my mind in that, and I'll address this to Matt, if I may. I know if you were to put an addition on your house, the question would be asked, my barn is here, how close are you to the barn with your new addition? And I know there has to be a space in between, so are we meeting that requirement with this?
So I would argue that those don't apply to us because that separation you're talking about, I think that you're referring to the single-family dwelling separation, that maybe applies to those two master structures.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's, the only thing to ignore is that particular use separation.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a lot of this.
Other questions?
I think other than those somewhat contentious points, this is a fairly straightforward application.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicants?
May I add one thing?
Certainly.
We have five camps on this property. We have five acres of land. Three of the camps sleep two people. That's it. We are finding, after two years of being open, we don't have a lot of just couples coming. We have families. We have people with one child or two children or three children. And we need to be able to accommodate more families. And so that is our main goal with this project.
Thank you very much. I'll close the public hearing and let's discuss the application among ourselves.
I'd just like to add that, in essence, this is just a natural expansion of a non-conforming use. It's, this unit is having a natural expansion. That's, I think, in summary, what it will stand to.
I'll try, once again, a forlorn hope. I don't see any reason to go through each of the individual eight points. Board may feel differently, but I'm prepared to propose a motion at this point.
I have a question for the, the criteria?
Eight criteria.
Eight criteria? Sorry.
Three more than the previous application.
Okay.
That's cool. We'll do what is required.
I think it's important for our records that we do that.
Someone else can take the lead, House Member.
Who wants to start?
I'll do it, if you want. I, I believe that, number one, the site suitability, that the site is suitable for the requested use, that there is adequate usable space, adequate access, and an absence of environmental constraints. The immediate neighborhood impact is, this addition is not going to alter the neighborhood. There will not be excessive trips, no additional noise or vibration, no addition of dust, glare of heat, smoke, fumes, gas or odors, and the hours of operation are not going to be affected at all by this change. There is no undue nuisance or serious hazard to pedestrian or vehicular traffic. The addition will not increase the pedestrian traffic or the vehicular traffic in that area because it's off the street and the camp already exists and so there's no additional hazard. The availability of public services and facilities are already there and this will not impact them. The schools will not be impacted because the camps only operate during the summertime, so there's no additional students. They already have a septic system that is more than adequate for the cabin and the, or the camp and the addition. No impact to the water, stormwater drainage, fire protection, streets or parks. The site plan is appropriate and everything stays the same, including parking, traffic circulation, open space, fencing, landscaping, signage, commercial vehicles, and there's no lighting impact either. The impact of the neighborhood will not be affected by this change. The property values should not be affected. It's only a small addition to an existing structure, so there, it's not going to impact the local property values. And it's consistent with the spirit of the ordinance and the intent of the master plan.
Thank you. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. I move to grant the special exception requested in application number 14SE17, tax map number 268-040, to allow an increase in the square footage of cabin number two in, at the premises at 76 Middleton Road for the reasons stated by my colleague, Ms. Fraser.
At the 213 square feet?
Of not exceeding 213 square feet. And it'd be subject to the conditions noted in the planner's memo, which I assume you've seen.
I'd also suggest that we amend the motion to include that it's an accept, special exception from Article 17543A2.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's important since it was misquoted on application.
It also has the square footage of the deck.
So the applicant is asking for 169 square-foot addition in living space and a 43-square-foot addition to the existing deck that's at the front of the building.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you very much. Next notice, please.
The last matter before us this evening is case number 15-Victor-17 concerning tax map 242-25. The applicants are Susan and Malcolm Pease. This is a public hearing for a variance under Section 175-70 ECHO of the Wolfborough Planning and Zoning Ordinance to allow for the construction of a single-family dwelling with an attached garage set forward and not meeting the setback requirements of the Village Residential District. The property is located on Green Leaf Drive. A site visit was held at approximately 4:25 this evening and all members of the DBA present tonight were present at the site visit with the exception of Mike Cotter. Notice was provided to the appropriate town offices and to the Pease, the Y, Gary and Shelby Y, Henry J. Y. Revocable Trust, Sharp, Paro, Stadfield, Greenleaf Lot Owners Association, O'Hearn, and the Law Offices of Marbury and Marbury.
You're not any better.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, well, yeah. Technically.
I'll raise a question about being in a butter and technically we're separated by 30 feet of green space for that reason.
Do you feel that you can still make a fair decision?
Oh, yes. I don't even know the people.
Okay. Anyone have any objection to Mr. Y. continuing to serve?
Is Hank on the list of abutters?
He is.
Probably shouldn't fit in. I think he would... I'd be happy to step down. Just in case this comes back to bite anybody later on, we would not want to have a tainted board.
Sorry, Hank. For the purpose of this hearing and Mr. Weisstead, I'll appoint Suzanne Ryan. Mr. Marbury, would you identify yourself with the record, please?
Yes, indeed. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Philip Marbury, here from the Law Offices of Marbury and Marbury, here on behalf of the, the petitioners, Malcolm and, suddenly her name is evading me, Susan Pease.
Can we ask you to please put the microphone on to your...
Absolutely. Is that better?
Yes.
All right. My, my clients are requesting a variance and I think it's actually appropriate to note that in, there are arguments that this isn't even the variance needed, that their plan as proposed is in compliance with the current setback requirements. And specifically, the one that has been flagged as problematic is 175-70ECHO. And in 17570E, it states that garages shall be located to the side or rear of the principal dwelling unit. The garage shall be integrated into and masked by the residence or set back at least 15 feet behind the front building line and not be the dominant architectural feature of the streetscape. So there are two features, two requirements of that provision. One, that they shall be located to the side or rear of the principal dwelling unit. And I believe that each of you should have a copy of the site plan in this case. And it will show, and again, this is, and I understand that ambiguous language is both a challenge for you as the board as well as for property owners, but this garage is technically to the far-right side of the structure. Now, if that means that there can be no part of the residence behind the garage, then this would be in violation, but the statute does not clearly articulate that. It articulates that the garage must be to the side or the rear. It's an or. It is not to the rear. This is the front right corner of the dwelling, which, in my, in my understanding, that satisfies the strict compliance of the requirement that it be to the side of the dwelling. The second requirement, because that is only one of two requirements under this statute, is that it be one of two things. One, that the garage shall be integrated into and masked by the residence or set back at least 15 feet from behind the front of the building line. There's no question that this does not comply with the second of those two requirements, but it's an or. It must comply with one or the other. And in this case, it does clearly, it is integrated and arguably, I guess, if it was clearly, we wouldn't be here. It's arguably integrated into and masked by the residence. If you look at the plans, which have also been submitted for the board's consideration and review, the architectural drawings show that it was very intentionally integrated into the overall architectural design. There are similar peaks between the garage and the residence part of this structure. The masonry work that is decorating the entirety of the building itself continues in a cohesive scheme and design through the entire garage portion of this structure. And so, so in, in many ways, and I think more ways than simply requiring it be of similar plane from the street as the rest of the residence, this garage is intentionally designed to be a part of a cohesive scheme of architectural design with the residence. And so I would argue that it is, in fact, masked by the residence and in compliance with 17570E. In the event, however, that this board were determined that that is not in strict compliance, a variance request should be granted because the five elements, the five things that are required in order for a variance to be granted are present. Number one and two, as has been noted by the board before, are often considered together and in this case, it makes sense to consider them together as well. The variance would not be contrary to the public interest and it would be, the spirit of the ordinance would be observed for the following reasons. Number one, this, this garage and, and the purpose for this specific code requirement is purely aesthetic. This is, you know, in every other way, the site plan and the proposed structure complies with all setback requirements. And even this complies with all setback requirements, both on the front and the side. There's no question of setback concerns. What, what it, what it really is getting down to is the visual appeal, whether, whether a garage would be the dominant landscape of a property. And in this case, I don't think it would. And furthermore, to the extent that it would, it's really the only possible way that, that this could be designed based on the current geography of that particular lot. And furthermore, why it wouldn't be contrary to public interest, all of the neighbors have been notified of this. The Homers Association for this area has been given all of the plans, the site plan, the architectural drawings, they have no problem. It's been approved all the way through, from top to bottom. To my knowledge, there has not been a single objection to this specific building plan, architectural design and site plan. The spirit of the ordinance is also observed because it does, the spirit of this ordinance is an aesthetic one. It's, it's trying to get at avoiding a garage that looks like it's kind of tacked on to a house or that it is, it is not part of the house and, you know, that it's an eyesore. And that's not the case here. If the board would review the architectural drawings, it's, it's a beautiful design and it all flows very well together. It's cohesive. Substantial justice is done, and I, I was thinking about this element, and I think really what this is getting at is that the Supreme Court case of New Hampshire that really articulated these five elements was really concerned with the fact that as we become more restrictive in our planning and zoning, the concern is that we start to run into constitutional issues related to property rights and the ability for owners to, to possess, use, enjoy and defend, protect the property that they have, which certainly includes, at a minimum, being able to build a suitable home on the site. And, and so i, in this case, substantial justice is done because this is a difficult lot. This is a lot that has a history of different builders trying to go in to figure out how to build something that complies with all of the requirements. And, and in, I don't know the exact reasons why, but for whatever reason, it not being accomplished. The, the builder and the engineer and the art, and the surveyor that created these plans wrestled with how to create something that works based on the pre-existing granite ledge that, that kind of curbs the building area on the street side and on the right side of the property. Extreme drainage concerns because as you all saw at the site, it is, it is severely sloped downward. And so if a garage were to be placed any further back, we're going to run into drainage issues and, and concerns about water getting in. The left side of the property is also in need of, and, and the current site plan articulates certain drainage plans and water flow plans that, that are all necessary and have led to the creation of the current site plan. And so substantial justice is done because this, this doesn't offend anybody, this doesn't hurt anybody. There's no danger here. We're not running into setback requirements that are going to be prohibitive to, you know, utility lines, to boundaries, to neighbor disputes. None of that's present here. And so the variance is in compliance with substantial justice. The values of surrounding properties will not be diminished, in, in our opinion, because this is a very visually appealing design. This was something that a lot of thought was put into and, and it will, it will improve the value because instead of a, a big blank vacant lot with a lot of rock and debris, it's going to be a beautiful home. And again, that garage is, is very well-integrated. And if any of you don't have those... And if any of you don't have those plans, I'd be happy to show you. I do have copies here if you need them. So, after all of this, if that's a question, please feel free to request that of me. It's also important to note when it comes to the values of surrounding properties not being diminished is that I drove the street on Green Leaf Street, and I took pictures, and I have copies of those for the board's consideration. I can give. And I apologize, I wasn't able to make enough to give you all at the same time, but please feel free to review them and pass them down. You will notice that many of the houses on this street are in the same situation that my clients are in. They've got garages that sometimes stick out further than the rest of the home. Some of them, even though their garage is on the same plane as the rest of the home or set back, are arguably more in contradiction and in a different architectural design than the rest of the home compared to what my clients have submitted, which is very intentionally trying to bring those things together to one cohesive curb appeal view. And so, again, those are just for reference. Part of, and I will be the first to admit, part of what I was prepared to argue today was that front-facing garage was not actually a problem and that that was what was part of the issue in this case, and I was informed that the front-facing nature of the garage is not problematic. And so, you know, I can take a little sigh of relief in that we don't have to also argue that point. Finally, moving on to the fifth element of the request here, the special conditions of this property that distinguish it from other properties in the area are as follows, and I've touched on some of them. One is this granite ledge and the nature, the geographical layout of this particular lot. It's a very narrow lot that extends lengthwise deep. It's got rock ledge, significant rock ledge that would require, who knows at this point how much blasting and other extreme measures to try to reshape some of that, and the particular drainage issues that require that the septic system be placed on the left side of the lot and other drainage issues that go down there that made it more difficult for the builder and engineer to figure out an alternative site plan and building layout in this case. And so, you know, the final part, Section B really is not applicable, so we'll stick with Section A. Owing to the special conditions of this property as set forth above that distinguish it from the other properties in the area, no fair and substantial relationship exists between the purposes of the ordinance applicable to the application and the specific application of that provision to the property. And that's because the purpose of this ordinance, right, is articulated in 175-68.1, and it's to provide for higher-density residential dwellings in a range of dwelling units from single-family to multifamily within the built-up area and with organized community services such as fire and police protection and community water and sewer services. And then, you read between the lines, you understand that the purpose of this subsection E is really a visual one. It's an aesthetic one. And the substantial purpose of that is not being thwarted by granting a variance for this particular garage because it is very intentionally and specifically designed to be visually appealing, to be part of this overall structure, and to use, within the limitations of this particular lot, the resources and the space that's available to create a home that's going to be a great addition to this neighborhood and community. With that, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer any of them to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Questions, Sarah?
Yes. In our packet, we had drawings. This says page one. If you look at the
Yes.
Drawing at the bottom of the page. If you go from left to right, it's clearly a doorway entrance to the residential portion. Then it looks like a double garage door entrance. What is the third? It appears to be a door way over here on the right-hand end.
Absolutely. That is also the garage. That's part of the garage. It's set further to the right. It is, in fact, the rightmost element of the building is that one smaller garage. My understanding from talking with my clients is it's designed for like a smaller off-road type vehicle or like a Ranger, something like that. But it's a single bay port garage on that side with the two larger doors in the center part. But again, that is, if you look at the site plan, which, again, if you don't have, and I'll bring it up so you can pass it down.
And I have one other question about this drawing here.
I have that.
Yes.
If you look at this, look at this drawing, what is the distance from this corner of the residence back to this corner?
That I am actually unsure of. But the reason that I would argue it's not relevant under the statute is because of that or, and that's a really key or. The first part of the or says it has to be integrated architecturally with the rest of the design of the house.
I know, but I'd still like that dimension.
Okay. And yeah, I apologize, I don't know.
Okay.
So, this is a somewhat interesting application, obviously, but in discussing with a code enforcement officer, that measurement is about twenty feet or so, Sarah.
Okay, thank you.
And we felt that our interpretation of the ordinance, that that twenty-foot represented something that wasn't going to mesh well with the proposed single-family dwelling unit. So, it was really that separation between the front wall of the garage and the front wall of the primary single-family dwelling unit that we felt created a threshold that was not cleared by this particular building permit application, that twenty-foot or so distance.
Thank you.
So, the garage does extend twenty feet further forward than the front line of the building?
Roughly.
Roughly.
Fred?
Suzanne.
The way I look at this is that that third small garage is designed with good balance and scale in that it almost looks like it would be a woodshed. So, architecturally, they've done a nice job with this. And then I would add that even if you flipped it and put the garage on the other side, you're still going to run into the same issue of the integration and the location to the street it still would be. So, it doesn't matter right or left, so you don't have to really, at least to me, make the argument about which side is the worst side or the best side to put it on because we're going to end up with the same result. But I think architecturally, they've done a fine job by integrating the aesthetics of it.
Mr. Marbury, congratulations on your argumentation. It's really enjoyable. I think you have a hard time proving that this garage is masked by the building. It's definitely integrated, as Suzanne mentioned. It is architecturally integrated into the entire design, but there's no way around the fact that this is a two very large car garage with a third tacked onto the side on the front of the building, and therefore, you do need to come for a variance. That said, in my opinion, you have no difficulty arguing for special conditions. The presence of the ledge obviates any other possession for this garage than the one that's been designed to show. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions for the applicant?
Just a comment. This was mentioned on the blueprint. The building itself is way inside of any setback regulations. So, you know, there's nothing to do with setbacks or anything else, just the situation of the garage being moved forward.
Correct. That is correct. That's my understanding.
And also, this subdivision has water, town water, and town sewer, and I'm assuming this building will be hooked to that.
My understanding is yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And remember, the purpose of this ordinance that the applicant is requesting a variance from was to create a streetscape, essentially. And if you look at the buildings that are currently in its neighborhood, that purpose has already been obviated by a whole series of buildings, all of which have front-facing garages for one reason or another. I think the purpose of this ordinance needs perhaps to be, or at least needs to be revised.
Yeah, and at the risk of advocating for another application, just a brief history on this, this language is actually inserted into the ordinance in 2010 by a vote of the town. So, many of the structures that you see in those pictures were actually constructed before this subservient garage language was added. The other thing I'd add that's sort of interesting is the, on the site plan, the front wall of the garage is actually what's being used to achieve compliance with the maximum setback requirement of the VR district. So, the VR district has a minimum and a maximum setback in order to create that streetscape. So, should the garage be pushed further to the rear, it would therefore not meet the requirement to the setback requirements of the VR district. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Other than the design desires of the owners, is there a reason why the rest of the house can't be pulled forward to be flush with the garage as most of the illustrations that you have shown us?
Yes, and primarily, that relates to the septic system and the placement that it needs to be for the overall drainage and the design of it.
I thought this was on town sewer.
Yeah, just stated it was on town sewer.
Well, I can comment on one issue that we discussed with the applicant, other than...
I mean, there's going to be need for a lot of drain, storm drains.
The land excavation is a primary issue when it came to locating the primary structure. We didn't discuss.
And that's actually, that's a good question because as in all of my conversations with the builders, it has been made very clear that that front-left area was needed for drainage and septic, and maybe he misstated, maybe I've misunderstood, because I believe it is going to be on town sewer. And so, but for myriad reasons, including the ledge, that was really difficult to do, to bring the entire structure forward. And you'll see in the design of the structure how it tears downward along with the slope. To bring it forward, I think, was extremely difficult, nigh on impossible, based on the ledge that exists as well. But again, and that may be my mistake, my understanding was that that was for some kind of septic and drainage issue as well.
Probably drainage.
Probably stormwater runoff.
It's all, everything in there and down at the lake are all on sewer. Water and sewer. I don't see this would be any different.
You know, I would be reluctant to deny this application in order to preserve a quote "streetscape" unquote, which doesn't exist in the first place, bringing the applicant to an enormous cost.
And in this district, we hook up to water and sewer, which is required by the ordinance, so there's additional protection placed, it should not be meeting that standard.
Other comments, questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairman.
All right, I'll close the public hearing. Let's discuss this a moment of ourselves. Who goes with the criteria?
Can I just make a comment? I think these photos are kind of helpful here because it shows a number of these garages. Some appear to be almost flush, and Matt did say that some of them were constructed prior to this zoning. Some of them aren't, but a lot of them have these big blank double-wide garage doors that stick out like a sore thumb. And I have to say, looking at this drawing here, it depicts three doors that seem to be less obtrusive. Matt, did you want to make a comment?
The only thing I was going to add to that, sort of a reiteration of what I said before, had this been presented to the building inspector with a flush wall, the garage in the single-family with a flush wall, I don't think we'd be here this evening. However, it was that twenty-foot separation that really triggered it because, let's face it, this is a relatively subjective section of the ordinance. It requires some interpretation by town officials, and it was just that distance that was a problem for us. So, we recognize fully that the construction exists in that area right now. Not all of those garages are set back fifteen feet as the ordinance calls for, but they are in most cases at least flush or relatively flush with the front wall of the single-family dwelling.
Other discussion? Who goes with the criteria one by one? The variance will not be contrary to the public interest.
The spirit of the ordinance is observed. Combine the two of them, and we find that there's no violation of public health, safety, welfare. There is obviously no detriment to the existing neighborhood because it sort of fits into the way the existing neighborhood has developed over time prior to the passage of the ordinance and now subsequently as well. I would find in favor of numbers one and two.
I'd also like to add that the local property owners association has stated that they have no objection to this design. Substantial justice is done, third element?
Again, balance of what the town loses by granting the variance with what the town gains by strictly enforcing 175-70E. I think the balance in this case in terms of substantial justice would fall on the side of the applicant.
Values surrounding properties will not be diminished. Susan?
Typically, we don't weigh in heavily one way or the other on it without professional testimony, but I'd like to observe that, given the ledge that's there and given the crater that's there, the lot is a difficult lot, and to have a house that is designed so well placed there rather than the barren lot, I think actually will improve the neighborhood overall.
Yeah, Fred, I also go back to what you said on that one as well. The homeowners association has approved this, so I'm going to say that probably they don't feel it's going to diminish their values.
I think that's correct, and there's been no testimony that shows that this construction of this house as proposed would diminish the surrounding values. Number five, literal enforcement. I think Suzanne, your note there about the special conditions of the property is very relevant here because you do have a lot of ledge. I think the excavation that's already taken place sort of shows that. I think the other challenge here is going to be how you get the water, although that's not our issue, the stormwater runoff. I think the plans in part reflect that that's going to be a difficult issue. Any other comment on special conditions?
I think it's very obvious that there are special conditions because I don't know of another lot in Wolfboro that has been blasted and then left. There's obviously issues for trying to build on this lot.
Yeah, and the special conditions obviously exist because of the presence of the ledge. In the presence of the ledge, property is distinguished from other properties in the neighborhood, and there is no fair and substantial relationship between applying 175-70E to this particular application, and the use is quite reasonable, is what everybody aspires to in this country.
Okay. Any other comments? Call for motion?
I move to approve case fifteen-D seventeen, variance of Article 175-70E, garage placement of Tax Map 242-025 for a variance to the setback and allowing the integration of the garage into the architectural development of the placement of a new home.
And that will be subject to the conditions that are in the planner's memo. Any other? Is that, what's, motions made, a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
I would just like to point out those photos again and the fact that a lot of those have these big, huge, blank garage doors that are a lot more obtrusive than the architecture they have shown here, and I think they have made an effort, Fred, to try to compensate for that twenty-foot setback.
And I'd like to add an amendment to that, that we approve per the plans presented tonight, which is, one is dated July 31, 2017, and the front page is called Plan Building Layout Option Number Four, so that the building inspector has the proper plans before him that we worked from.
I second that amendment. The motion.
Can I ask a question? When we cite that particular plan, is that also connected directly to those architectural drawings? Otherwise, could we just cite the architectural drawings because that architectural appearance of the building, I think, is integral, at least into my approval of the bit?
The only concern I would have there is that there are issues between the building inspector and all of the property that is in the building.
Okay.
And you would have the potential to change the roof when you use a construction set that are different.
Yeah.
Okay.
But the location plan, I think, is a good reference.
Well, I just referenced that we worked from. I'm not saying that anything beyond that.
Okay.
Would we want to make it clear that the difference, the setback of the main house from the front of the garage can be no more than 20 feet? Or is that getting too deep, too much in the weeds?
We're nitpicking now.
Okay.
I think we're granting a variance from 175-70E. We're not granting a dimensional variance. We're not granting dimensions specifically, although we are granting and with understanding that it's more than 20 feet. But we are granting, let's grant 175-70E and let the building inspector and the applicant work out how exactly that is put into practice.
Okay.
And we do have the minutes from the meeting that very clearly state that we are looking at those type of garage doors to meld into the front, so.
The motions are made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Variance is granted. Thank you.
Unanimous, Fred.
Unanimously granted.
Those are those sets. Yeah. Oh, absolutely. Matt? There are too many than not enough.
Since you're also acting as Robin's assistant here, we have the minutes of that. Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is to review the minutes of the meeting of October 2nd.
On the minutes, they have me listed as present. They also have me listed as absent. They have me listed as a member, and they also have me listed as an alternate. Could we try to resolve that and have me listed A as being there since I'm
Which would you rather list you as?
I think I'd like to be, I'd like to be there, and I'd like to be a member.
I think it was Suzanne Ryan who was absent and excused.
Yes.
And we did note that Robert Kingston is absent.
But I have an overall, I can't vote on these, but I have an overall concern, and I think maybe the board would consider tableing these minutes. We need to have the consistency that we used to have and not long ago in that. When we went through the criteria, there was a what or a why for, whether you were thumbs up or down on the criteria. There would be an explanation as the board makes a very concerted effort to state why we agree or disagree with the five criteria individually. And then when we go to the second app, that was done properly on the first application. When we went to the second, or you guys went to the second application, it just on page five, it just said the board reviewed the five criteria as follows, it lists them as listed in our, in our criteria, and no explanation as to how we agreed, disagreed, or what criteria we used to. For historical purposes, nobody, when you go, when you go back, and some of you will be here, when that particular building may ask for some other changes, and you go to the history, you have none. And although the zoning board looks at special conditions, can be different in each application, all the other four criteria, we should try to be somewhat consistent. And so, I am pleading to the board to please table until someone can correct that fifth page, if the board would so indulge.
What's the sense of the board here?
I know I mentioned it to Matt before the meeting, that I was surprised we had such great coverage on the first one and nothing on the second one.
I'd like to make a comment on page four, second paragraph. I think Mr. Cronin would be, rather be Tim than Time.
I thought that was your nickname.
That's one thing. I found some others when I read through, but I didn't circle them. There's mine.
In that same line, the of should be an if.
Which page is that?
It's also page four.
Oh, okay.
Let's go through and make the comments on them.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I think we really ought to address the issues that Sarah and Suzanne raised. If the information on the five criteria in the second case in the minutes is available, it should be included in the minutes. I don't see any point in our going through the minutes at this point to correct them if that information is available because we're only going to have to revisit it again the next time.
Wasn't it taped?
Yes, it wouldn't have been taped.
Where's taped?
So I would move that these minutes be tabled, that we instruct the recording secretary to revise the decision on the second case and return the minutes to us at the next meeting for proper disposal.
General agreement to that? Your mic. Entertained a motion adjourned.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Meeting's adjourned.